...2012 of the Foxborough School Committee to order. First tonight, we will be celebrating just over 243 years of service to Foxborough by recognition of our retirees. That's all. Were there days you felt almost that old, some of you? Not all will be here, but we will read their names anyway. We'll move on to visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, Mr. Walter Mitchell, Foxborough High School Guidance Service Annual Report, Ms. White and Mr. Theodos, strategic plan 2011, year of the end achievement, Mrs. Spinelli, superintendent's early entry plan with the development of strategy, Mrs. Spinelli, requests for bids, Mr. Yukna, proposed school committee meeting dates, other matters. And at 9:20 approximately, we will go into executive session for the discussion of the draft of the collective bargaining agreements for the Foxborough Custodial Workers Association, Foxborough Maintenance Workers Association, and Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association, and to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel as an opening meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee. The school committee will return to open session for an update of collective bargaining agreements and a vote by the committee.
Okay. Wendy?
So our retirees are here, and we thank them for their many years of service to the Foxborough Public Schools. We have a gift from the school committee which the Chair, Mrs. Lord, will be handing to you, Ms. Lord. And how about if I, since I have the microphone, would you like me to read the names of the people that are here?
Yes. Why don't you?
I have it right here.
Well, the highlighted ones.
Since you're the gift giver.
The highlighted ones are present. So as we go down, just mention.
I will. I'm going to mention them in order. If they're here, we'll say no. And then after you get your gift, I know we like to thank and congratulate you, so if you could make the rounds like over here so we could have a little parade going around the middle, that would be awesome. All right. So, Ellen, you will not be surprised that she is first, 25 years of service as the food service manager at the Borough School in most of her tenure. Ellen, congratulations.
Oh, I think that's one. Don't get it yet, and that's why she's here to accept your gift.
Had quite a wonderful party, too, I might want to add.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for your service.
And you're still going to be around town, right, Ellen?
Oh, yes. I've got it in my hand.
Do you remember the Borough?
I do. Sure. I do.
So, Ellen, if we have another shelter, will you come back to cook? Because I think the senior citizens are expecting it.
Wendy and I will be there for the next suggestion.
That would be good. Because that would be an expectation you have already set and a standard to which you will have to maintain the custom. What is that? Maintain the standards to which they have become accustomed. That'd be great. Following Ellen is our Director of Food Services, Martha Dooley, who represents 22 and 1/2 years of service at Foxborough Schools. Martha had quite the fabulous retirement party as well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Enjoy every minute.
I will.
Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Next on our list but not present is Laurel Dudley Pappas, who actually retired a couple of months ago from the Ahern Special Education Department, and she had 21.8 years of service in the Foxborough Schools, so we thank her for that. Next up is Diane Horton, who is the art teacher extraordinaire at the middle school, and she has had 15 years of service in the Foxborough Public Schools.
I have art lessons for my son.
Enjoy your party, too.
Enjoy.
I'm going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Next is Cheryl Law, who has been elementary teacher, most recently and mostly in third grade, the Igo School. Cheryl has given 18 years of service to the Foxborough Public Schools, and I will really miss Cheryl.
I remember talking to you in my driveway one night. It was a great conversation.
And thank you for all you did for those Kaminsky boys.
We've also inadvertently signed her up to be a sub. I don't know if she had that in her plans, but we do. So whether or not you give us your number, we'll be calling you. Next is Jerry Roy, who, as you know, has appeared before this committee many times. The art department head, K through 12, and an art teacher at the high school. He can't be here tonight, but he has given 28 years of service to the Foxborough Public Next but not present, Judy Sherlock, who's been an educational assistant for over 25 years in the Foxborough Public Schools, mostly at the elementary level, and we thank her for many years of service. Thanks, Judy. Next is Jeff Theodos, who is our high school principal, who has been here for seven years, I believe. And I've already invited him back when the NIASC report comes in, so this might not be your last one. See you soon. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
You're old enough to retire.
I don't know. I'll let you know.
So you get that year, so.
Thanks, Mel. Thanks. Work out.
Next is Mr. Mike Tiano. He has been in the Foxborough Public Schools for 14 years as a middle school guidance counselor. Fun party, too. Went all. They were all good. I'm all about the retirement parties.
She had all this.
You know, they are really nice, because you get to see, you know, everyone honoring this, many, many contributions, and there are always many more than we know about.
I know.
As many of you know, back in the fall, one of our bus drivers, Kathleen Walsh, retired with over 20 years of service to the Foxborough Public Schools. Kathleen's not here tonight. We had a wonderful gathering for her as well. And last but not least, and we did expect her to be here tonight, but I just got word this afternoon, her mother is quite ill in Albany. So Lori Waterman is retiring from the Foxborough Public Schools as a 27-year kindergarten teacher, and I know she would be here tonight if it weren't for her mom's taking ill. Been my son's kindergarten teacher, so she has a special place in my heart. So congratulations to all of you, and thanks for being here. If you wanted to wrap it up, Ms. Lord, for the last one.
Well, you'll be dearly missed after your 243 years plus of service to the children of Foxborough. We deeply appreciate all you have come back and visited. Oh, I meant to. Mr. Gardner will be joining us as soon as he can this evening. Any visitors? Approval of minutes.
I have just one suggestion, and it's whatever you choose to do. On page three, I love what was written about the public hearing. We are a race-to-the-top school, and I know you had spoken about race-to-the-top. You may, you know, it may be appropriate, somebody else reading this may not totally realize, and as Foxborough Public Schools is one of a few that were chosen as a race-to-the-top school, you made, a suggestion is to have that inserted, however you see fit.
Oh, I would leave that sentence up to. I have a suggestion. After the first one, Ms. Spinelli gave background on the new Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System, which is to be implemented in September 2012. A requirement for all race-to-the-top districts.
Right. That sounds good.
So if that's acceptable, I would second your, this motion as amended.
Vote, please. All in favor?
All赞成.
You'll abstain. Okay. Teaching and learning highlights. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, we are thrilled.
Do I get votes?
Yeah, you are. Oh, Joe's going to hug you. That's great. After you read the book.
All right, I'm going.
Don't forget your required reading. This is a great way to wrap up the year, because as you know, throughout the year, we have started every school committee meeting with a teaching and learning highlight, which is, for those watching at home, something interesting, or exciting, or new, or just plain impressive, that students or teachers or both have been doing throughout the year. And we've tried to vary it from elementary, middle, and high school. We've tried to vary it across content areas and have a variety of things, and sometimes in a subject area, sometimes in social-emotional programming, sometimes in awards that kids have gotten. And as this is our last official meeting in this fiscal year, I think this is a great transition, because Walter's here to talk to you about the high school summer reading, which we're calling, they're calling, One Book, One School. It started last summer, so I think it was your idea to begin with. So who better than to wrap up our year and set us up for the summer and the fall? But Mr. Walter Mitchell?
Well, it was the English department's idea, and Mr. Theodos embraced it, as did the faculty and the administration. It was wonderful. I thought we got a lot of mileage out of Outliers. Was used multiple times as references, for references. And I think it was a valuable text for us, particularly in our Warrior huddles. And I think it stayed with a number of the kids. I think they, there are lessons there that they won't forget. And we feel just as excited about this year's book. The process now is that every one of the faculty can make a suggestion. We have a suggestion box, and a suggestion entails rather lengthy sort of description of the book, and why it would be good for Foxborough, and how it appeals to our core values. And this year, the one that we voted on as faculty and thought was the best choice came from Marla Davis Lonergan, history teacher. Her suggestion, it's called The Last Lecture. It's by Randy Pausch. It's quite a compelling book for, it's so full of life and full of witty little anecdotes. And here was a man who really had the world by the tail. He was a director of computer science at Carnegie Mellon Institute in Pittsburgh, who was doing groundbreaking work with virtual worlds. I'm not an expert on that myself, but I was able to glean quite a bit of knowledge of that in this book. And his work with visual, virtual worlds enabled him to get hired by Disney as an Imagineer, which was one of his lifelong goals, was, he grew up admiring two people, Walt Disney and Captain Kirk. And so this was just such a, you know, a wonderful moment for him. And he met the woman of his dreams. He had to fight like crazy to get her to move to Pittsburgh to join in with him. Those are great chapters in the book. They even left their wedding in a hot air balloon, which, and then averted near disaster in landing. So that's a very skilled chapter. And tragically, Randy Pausch was diagnosed with terminal cancer, was given basically four to five months to live. And the irony is, is that at Carnegie Mellon, they had this last lecture series where it wasn't for terminally ill people, it was for people who, you know, if you were, it was hypothetical, if you were to give a last lecture, what would you say? And on that day, sadly, Randy Pausch announced that he was terminally ill, and this was going to be his last lecture. But you could see the lecture on YouTube, and the student, for the students out there, we recommend that you do watch the lecture on, and much of what's in the book is in the lecture itself, although all the questions on the test I just made are from the book and not the lecture notes. Some are still on there. But it's, what's wonderful about Randy Pausch is just this joie de vie and joy of life that, I mean, he carpe'd the heck out of every diem he had left on this planet. And it's just stunning, the resiliency of spirit that he had. And he gave this last lecture not for his colleagues.
His children.
He gave it for his children, yeah. And this was a legacy that he wanted to leave with them, because they're young kids, and they, you know, probably wouldn't remember much. So, and now they'll have a lifetime of memories within the lecture itself and the book. So we think the kids will love it. For a book that would appear to be morbid, it's anything but. It's everything otherwise. And so, and then, let's get to the real issue. The test is, the one that I just made, is 50 multiple-choice questions. I think they're very fair. If you basically trace Randy's childhood and all the episodes he gives us about that, his marriage to Jay. Oh, by the way, I've contacted Jay's agent, and she's just written a book herself. She's quite a stalwart woman, amazing woman in a number of different ways. And put out an offer to her to come speak to us, if we can get her to come. She's got the three kids back in Virginia, so we'll see. We, you know, do my best, but you never know, so. But if you do that, I think that you'll do well on the test, and there's one little mini essay at the end of it, so hope you enjoy it.
I'd actually like to take the test. This is the book that I, I thought it was, the more you go into detail. Angela Davis told me to read it, and so I, and his philosophy is pay it forward, even though he was dying. And there was, I remember one of the, right?
Yep.
Pay it forward. Wonderful book, if you haven't read it. I highly recommend it.
I gave it to my son for Christmas.
Excellent. I highly recommend it.
I'll give Jared the test.
Good. Since he, you know, the book you lent me, I don't know if you've heard from him, but he took it from me over the weekend, so.
Already?
He's reading the book. Yeah. I said I would defer.
That's good. He's going to love that.
Anything you like, he likes them. That's the way it goes.
Vice versa.
And I just want to say, as a parent, The Outliers generated a lot of conversation around the dinner table, so I can only imagine that this book will, as well. One of my children has actually already read it, she's in college, but I think it's a great choice, and I know last year was a really, it was a really great experience. So I love the idea that you came up with. I'm thinking about, back to the days when they had the required reading lesson, you know, sometimes it was.
Pimsum.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, I'm really happy you mentioned that, because I don't want to forget to say that when, first, thanks to Jerry Roy, Mr. Roy, for setting this up on our website. This page is there, as, and we have modified assignments for students who need modified assignments. They can contact me or Diane Casilli. We both have them. And also, at the bottom of the website, there's a link. The social studies, mathematics, and science departments have listed extra credit reading assignments. They're really cool, like projects. They're really cool that if the kids want to come in, get extra credit right off the bat in the beginning of the school year next year, they have a list of titles, and it's not, you have to read any of them, but there's some great texts there, and they've done a wonderful job. So there are more books there if you want to, if the kids want to look at them.
Excellent. I really liked the way it brought the whole school together after everybody reading the same book in the fall, so I think, I hope it's the tradition we keep up.
Thanks. Me, too.
May I touch on the other summer reading that's taking place as well? One of the things that the middle school is doing, much like the high school, has selected this one book, they have two books that are required for students going into fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And it is theme-based for the one required book, and then there's suggested reading lists for the other books for them to select. And those themes are based on treating others with respect and accepting differences. And that ties in with our elementary in that the themes for grades one, two, three, and four are theme-based, and it connects to our caring school community curriculum. And the text for grades one and two, the theme is friendship, and for three and four, it's cooperation and teamwork. So you will see that the connection from first all the way up through grade 12, it's connecting to same text, same experience, and that theme of what, going back to what are our core values, and it all ties together. All of the information is right on the website. It connects to the Boydin Library, too, as far as suggested lists that are there, the activities for students to engage in, and then great resources for parents, whether it's from the very early on, activities that are games and reading supplements for them, and then other ideas for text. And the middle school had the New England Patriots kickoff their summer reading with three of the Patriots players in an assembly, for theirs to be their off-season work and their playbook, and they'll turn their playbooks in after the summer, and will have the opportunity, if they've met at least two reading books, to be in a raffle to have lunch with one of the players. So lots of great certificates of participation and incentives to keep up the reading and the writing over the summer, because we know how important it is.
Joey, hit this hand up, I don't know if you want to recognize him.
So the thing into the Patriots' reading is that after school, I know, when school starts, they would get, the principal would announce that, that if, what, your summer reading turned in on the first day of school, and then they, I think at the end of September, I think they have an assembly of the Patriots, and they open the raffle, and then they announce the winner who read the most books.
Right.
And then that's the person who, the people who eat lunch with the Patriots.
That's right. Barely big incentive. But you won't be in that pool.
I don't really have the hype.
Right. And you'll be reading the book that Mr. Mitchell's talking about.
Yeah, I purchased at the library this weekend, but I had to put it on hold, and then have it.
That's okay. You'll be getting it, sir.
We can get Mr. Mitchell.
He needs to study like a 50-question test.
Joey, wonderful. Familiar. Miss Mitchell, our thanks to the whole English department, because I know it's a team effort, and I know that you played an important role. Having gone through many years where it was a struggle to get numerous boys, although there would have been incentive with the lottery, it's so great to have something that is, you know, that ties back into our values and to the climate, and the fact that then there are still things that they can do in any other subject. I just, I want to praise you. I think that's fantastic.
Thanks, Gary.
And I, you know, this is reality-based, this is a fantastic book, It's Outliers was, and I think it does also impact, when you're psyched and you're reading and you love to read, you do remember and you start out fully engaged, and I just think this is just a great way to go.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So would you like that hug now, or would you just like?
Yes, I have a group hug.
Warrior hug. Warrior hug. Congratulations.
Thanks also for taking the time to come. It's not easy in the last week of school, there's a lot going on.
So, Lorraine White, couldn't you be here tonight? So we have Mr. Andy Servideo here with Jeff Theodos.
Great.
Andy Servideo.
Mr. Servideo will take the place of Ms. White.
Correct. So I like that, you know, you created the annual chapter book, I call it, Guidance Services.
Well, actually, it's been a good document to kind of, you know, check each year to see where we've gone and compare us to other years. It's kind of like the guidance bible, and we keep adding to it, and I think there's a lot of good things that go on in the guidance office. Andy will talk about the specific differences from this year's book as opposed to last year. There are a few changes, we have added a few programs, so I'll let Andy kind of take you through the book. It's kind of mixed into different chapters here, so Andy.
All right, so as Mr. Theodos said, most was pretty straightforward. It's a lot of repeat of what we've been doing. One great thing is this year, we've actually added a lot of new programs and kind of tweaked some of our old ones. Just to start quickly, on page five, one of the things that we did this year is teachers now are able to do their student course recommendations on Power School. The old days, each student would have to walk around with a sheet and get each teacher to sign it. Now each teacher can just pull up their roster and pop in, you know, Algebra II honors, AP English 11. We still, as councilors, still meet with each student and talk about their recommendations, but this way it's a lot easier for students and teachers to get the recommendations. As we, as we go down just a little bit, at the bottom of the page, AP tests. Last year, we administered 213 tests, and this year, we administered 246. We did have an increase in our AP numbers this year, which is always excellent. That being said, on the next page, page six, our AP potential numbers have pretty much increased across the board. Real quick, what AP potential is, is for sophomores and juniors who take the PSATs, depending on where their scores are, we can basically put in a certain bunch of information, and we, it's like an 85% chance of whether or not they're going to get a certain score, so a three or better, four or better. We put in 85% chances of three or better on the AP exams, and, you know, last year for AP Calculus, it was 21. With 17, this year it's 21, so we've increased a little bit. Some went up pretty significantly. AP English Language was at 67. Next year, it's for 83, so we are able to see some differences there, and that's kind of expanding our AP numbers across the board.
Right. It gives us an opportunity to kind of challenge some of the other kids, to say that, you know, based on your scores, we think you're a good candidate to come into the AP program. So there'll be a group of kids that may not think about going into the program, and we kind of encourage them because of their pre-AP scores, if you will.
I'll put a little sticky tab on that page. So what this really means is that we have more kids coming up the line, or have, at least from one unit, that have potential to be, to take AP courses and do well on.
Correct.
To have account for credit.
Yeah, there's definitely obviously a lot more to it. It's the work ethic and, you know, support at home and all that, but just the raw numbers, we definitely can see that there should be an increase in the AP numbers over the next handful of years.
I mean, most of them were pretty dramatic, I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you prefer us to hold our questions to the end, or would you, can we ask questions?
Why don't we, it might make more sense if we address it as we come across them.
I ask it every year, and you don't get away until I ask it again for this year. What can we do to drive AP, and this is all very exciting, and I like the fact that kids are encouraged, and they, there's some data that they're presented with that says they have the potential. How can we get AP in the 10th grade? I ask it every year. So what do you think about that?
Well, you know, it is something we're starting to work on. When I spoke back in September, we were talking about how we added AP US history one to the 10th grade. We're talking about down the line, expanding some of our other APs, possibly doing some of the history classes earlier. We're still, they'll still have to do the AP US, AP US 1, AP US 2, but we could possibly look at maybe European history doing it a different year, possibly doubling up on that sophomore year, possibly doing government sophomore, junior, senior year. So we're looking at it. It hasn't obviously happened yet. We're slowly moving in that direction, but we agree, it's something that we want to try to get our students across the board to take those APs as early as possible. The more APs they have, the better off they are.
So what year do you think it might start?
A year from, a year from.
So it won't start, it'll start 2013, 2014?
Yeah, because what will happen is we'll flip our elective program.
You sure? Because I'm writing this down. I'm back in check with you.
We haven't had, I don't want anyone to write a date down at this meeting. We, there are conversations that have to be had. I don't, we haven't had them yet, so it's encouraging and moving in that direction, but that's all we can say as of June 2012.
18.
What we've done in the process is we've trained, one of the drawbacks is training enough AP teachers in order to be able to offer the courses. So we're at a point where we train, and we keep adding, asking more of our teachers to go to AP school. So what that allows us to do. So what that allows us to do, because there's certain criteria, so that some of the sciences might be a little hard, but what a lot of schools do, they flip the, kind of the social studies courses. So as sophomores who are ready, they may take AP Government. I know one of the things we're getting our kids, one of our teachers ready is AP Psych, AP European History. So those would be the ones that if we have sophomores that are ready to go, they would take those. There'll be a couple that would be ready to take an AP Bio or Chemistry as sophomores. Currently, we split the AP program into two sections, so we have, I'm not sure how many, I'm going to guess they're 20 sophomores that are taking the pre-AP US History because we broke it into a two-year course. But I would say that, you know, we would be, should be ready to go in the years.
Just, it is more complex. There are staffing implications as well, because if the more sections of AP that you have, and those teachers are, we have more teachers taking the AP training in terms of teaching it, but the more sections they take on, then there are classes that they're not, that are going to be teaching. And so we, there is, it's not an even swap, in other words. The numbers don't always work out correctly. So there are some staffing implications. So we have to look at it through the context of the budget as well, to make sure that we can, and we have additional staffing, even if it's a partial additional staffing to cover the classes that they're no longer teaching. So it's a bigger picture than, are kids ready? It's also, are we ready? And do we have enough staffing to accommodate that? So. But I do think it's good. We need to ask that question every year because we do drive the budget. And if we never ask the question, it's never going to happen. We say we're about student achievement, but this is something that is, that is, that could be key. So. I just don't want people at home to think we have extra staffing, and we start a year from September. I want to, just be, just, I'm the cautionary note person. We ask it every year. I've been asking every year for nine years, so I'm just being consistent.
When you look at the numbers, it's like, how do you accommodate?
Right. We need to remember this and have it as part of our budget discussion, or when you have your budget discussion.
Our plan would not, would not be to ask for any staff. It would be as-is, so.
It looks like you'd have to accommodate in one way or the other. It's just a matter of the teachers having the right training. So if you have to shuffle them, you know. What do you hope for class size to be, Jeff, for these? What's your max?
Well, whatever it came out to be, it wouldn't put a heavy emphasis on, let's say, the grade 10, 11 programs. So, you know, we'd have to look at and make that decision. So I don't have a number in my head other than the fact that all the numbers will be relatively even across the board. So I think at one point a few years ago, we had an issue, and I think Mr. Deere brought it up, that we had a larger grade 10 and 11 classes in English and history that we had to pay attention to. And so, again, we would pay attention to those courses as we continue to build the AP program, so.
Moving on to page nine, one thing that we sort of added, I guess it's more of a tweak, is a mental health team. For the past five years that I've been here, the guidance counselors, the four guidance counselors, and our three administrators have been having meetings, usually either every week or every other week, to talk about a whole range of guidance issues and social, emotional. This year, we added a few new components. We added our school nurse, our school social worker, and our special ed department head, just to kind of get some other possible avenues to go down, if indeed we need to go down those roads. We've noticed a pretty significant increase in social, emotional needs. Some are minor, some are major. So the more we can get involved as a team, the better off we can, we can help our student population. Yes?
Andy, if we turn back to page seven for just a minute.
Sure.
I am just wondering, there's an increase, you know, from seven and eight percent to 15% of two-year colleges.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's exciting that people want to get at least two years. Do you think part of the economics is driving that right now? They can maybe plan on definitely in two years and?
I think to a certain extent. I don't know if it's necessarily all 15 are thinking that, but.
No, I did, because that's, you know, from seven to 15%. That's, you know, that's doubled.
Every year, we hear students say, you know, I'm thinking about going to wherever. Like, I'm thinking about going to Stonehill, but I'll, instead I'll go to Mass Bay, or I'll go to Massa Sawyer, or I'll go to Bristol University College. And do that. And a lot of it does have to do with the financial need.
I just had noticed that.
I think a lot of them get their basics out of the way, and then make the transfer.
Right.
I see a lot with some of the kids that I see, and it's purely financial.
Right. And also, if they do well, they have a possibility of applying for scholarships, don't they, for?
Correct.
A company, yeah.
Yeah.
And the state, for any, you get, you get 150 off your tuition, you know, at a state school. Plus a lot of them have those agreements with the four-year colleges, if they go there, they.
You get a certain GPA, they can basically automatically enroll into a state school.
But it was a double, so I was just.
It is. I, you know, it is, I noticed that myself, and I just wondered myself, is it the last four, five years when the economy's had a downturn, we see an uptick in kids studying?
Kids just don't have the money.
Right. Well, we see an uptick in two-year community colleges, and that makes sense economically. But there is a trend starting where we're going down with college, so overall. And you see an increase, there's a supplemental page you have in the back where those, we still have it round to two, three percent. Last year, it's been, for two years in a row, three percent into the military. But that directly high school to work has been increasing. And that may also be economics, but that's something that I think may drive what we do, school to career and some other things. There are a base of students that are deciding no college whatsoever. That's what these numbers.
And we'll address a component, change in the guidance to, you know, feature that particular piece as well. So we certainly recognize that.
Even at that case, you know, the kids who go off to work, I think once you're out in the work world, and you see what's going on, I think you realize that you do need to go back to school in order to, you know, some of these kids really don't know what they want to do, and going out to work is not a bad thing. And to try and, you know, stockpile a little money and try to figure out what they want to do with their lives, it's, it's a plus. You know, instead of going off to college and wasting money for a year and not accomplishing anything, I'd rather they try to figure out what they want to do with the rest of their lives.
I could agree with you.
I think you see a real split on what's going on with these kids now. And more power to them, because I give them, you know, a lot of credit for trying to figure out really and truly what they want to do.
Well, one of the things, though, Martha, I think you're right. We've never really funded everything we wanted to do with the school-to-career partnership. So again, it'll come down to, there should be, at some point, you would want to have a debate when you get to the budget, is this the year that we may then expand it, given now that we have several years of that going. I mean, what we do is incredible. Perhaps we need to do a little bit more to service that growing, you know, population. And do we stay in touch with them, so that we know how many students, how many Foxborough High School graduates have actually graduated from college, or graduated from community college, or are these other one-year programs? 1% go to the one-year program. Do we keep track? We don't.
No.
We don't.
I think what most kids really have to be mindful of when they're going to some of these two-year colleges, if they have a real goal in mind, and they're pretty set on where they want to go, they've got to make sure that where they start, things will be transferred where they want to go. So they don't lose out on that, too. So I think there's a lot of consideration that has to go into their long-range planning and what they want to do.
That's a good, that's a good point. I couldn't help but notice, too, and I'm wondering whether, again, the economy reaches down to where people are applying. UMass Amherst, 117, and only 64 were accepted. And Bridgewater State is close to 100. So I think it seems like there's probably more competition at the state schools because of the economy.
Oh, absolutely.
So then therefore, students are going to the community colleges and hoping of transferring to the state universities, so.
Their applications are probably the highest they've ever been.
Yeah.
So they get to pick and choose who they.
The other interesting thing, anecdotally, some of the kids, whether they're here or children of other people they know and other, that there's a lot more talk about, from the kid's level, about being more conscious of their parents' ability to pay for college and what that's going to do to the family, and maybe in the girl taze, you know, when that was less of an issue for parents, even if they didn't know what they do, they go and see how they did for the semester and kind of wander around a little bit. And I think kids are more responsible and conscious now of not maybe putting themselves forward unless they're sure what they want to do or waiting a bit. So I know I've heard that from some young people, saying, you know, I don't know exactly what I want to do, and I'm not so sure I want to waste a semester before I figure it out. So I think there's a lot at play.
Well, it's not just the parents' involvement. It's how much are the kids going to owe when they get out?
Exactly.
I listen to some of these kids that have graduated, and what they owe, it's staggering, staggering. I don't know how you could even get a loan on a car with that kind of outstanding balance. I mean, they're behind, and yet if they don't get the job of their dreams, and they're sitting home, which a lot of them are doing because there's not a lot of opportunities, how do you even pay back your loans? So, you know, these kids, it's not, it's not a good time, so.
Before we move on, Beth, I just had to ask, because I also ask it every year. We're still, I guess we're going back to page nine. What percentage of, in the population, what is the at-risk student percentage in the population?
As far as a specific number, I'm not really even sure what the range would be. I mean, I think throughout the year, someone could have mental health, social, emotional issues in September. By November, they're fine. Someone could have them all year. So it's, they go up and down all year, so I don't know the specific number. And some are severe where they're hospitalized, and some just have a hard time staying in their math class for a week. It really, there's such a major range, it's hard to really give a specific answer, unfortunately.
Yeah, I would, I would say, based on our.
I don't miss White crazy, but I do think that's, you know, that is something that, you know, the percent of the population that's tutored, the percent of the population that is at risk, because she did have a number last year, and we know it's increasing. It just would be helpful to, you know, keep track of that number. I think what you do is outstanding. I think this report is outstanding. But I think sometimes it's knowing the numbers are very helpful to us from a budget perspective.
I would say, based on our mental health team conversations, we range somewhere between high teens to high twenties, somewhere in there. So I would say our at-risk population, guesstimate would be about 25.
So that's comparable to what the number we were given last year, then?
I don't remember that number. Okay. But.
Thank you.
I think it's great, I think that's great. You know, I'm in the mental health field, so I think that's awesome to be able to identify at-risk students because obviously it affects their learning, and it is, it's something that's going to go up and down depending upon what kind of population and what kind of, you know, students we have that are going to meet different kinds of struggles. And I'm assuming, too, like, you may in fact have students that move in and out of that. There may be some students that do well, then there may be an area, whether at time when they need more services and.
Some kids are short-term.
Right.
Some kids, you're going to have struggle in a more ongoing fashion, so it can really run the gamut.
Sure.
So I think we have three kind of checkpoints at work. One is our tutoring program, one is our ITI program, and one is our mental health team. So somewhere along the way, we catch them at some point and try to set up a plan to support them as best we can.
Moving on to page 10, just real quick, about EPPs, Educational Proficiency Plans. Long and short of what that means is MCAS, sophomore year MCAS. Anyone who gets a 220 to a 238, they're in the needs improvement range, they're put on the EPP. What that means for the student is they're required to take a fourth year of that subject, either math or English. We, as guidance counselors, work with teachers to monitor their progress, make sure they're enrolling in the right classes, make sure we have the right documentation as far as the midterms and finals. And currently, we have 30 students in math, 32 for English. So we have a total of 72 students between junior year and senior year who are on EPP. For English, you know, as far as their subject in course selection goes, there's really no difference. They have to take a fourth year of English regardless. It's just a little bit more paperwork, it's a little bit more of them not being at that proficient level. But we do offer an EPP test in the spring, and often we get students to jump up and get into the proficient range. Some don't get there, and some do, but at least we're moving them in that direction as far as the subjects go.
And they have to pass those courses, obviously, as well.
So just to be clear, most of these are kids who did pass the MCAS, but might be in the needs improvement.
Right.
Range. So they're not kids who have not passed, they just, they're not the level we'd like them to be.
Right.
So I think it's great that that much goes into planning for them. So would they be counted as part of the students? If you're on EPP and you're taking additional coursework, are you also a student who may be tutored?
Could be, could be.
But the tutoring that you mentioned on page three, that could be freshmen through senior year.
Correct.
Anyone who needs, we provide that assistance.
Right, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
So page 11, this is where we kind of start some of the really new programs for our this year and for next year. One of the things we did this year was an AP potential night. So I talked about AP potential a little earlier. We had a night specific to those students. We sent letters out saying your son or daughter has a potential to get free in X, Y, and Z courses. We had a night, and parents and students could come to hear what an AP course is all about, understand what it all means, and, you know, when we have the course selection within a few days, weeks later, they're a little bit more prepared of what's coming. And when we have our conversations, they understand what an AP is all about. So it was really a great success, and we're really happy about the AP potential night.
It was really, really well done, I have to say. And I know you modestly say the feedback was favorable. I would say very favorable. It was really good.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
And on top of that, AP Open House, another thing we did, where we took every student who is enrolled and an AP student for the upcoming year, and we had each individual teacher meet with those students and parents to describe every specific instance of what's going on in the year. So everyone's involved. They know what the syllabus is, they know what the summer work is, they know what the pace is going to be, so there's really no surprises come September. It's just a way for everyone to be on the same page. We, as faculty members, know what an AP is all about. Students sometimes think they know what an AP is all about, but until they're really in it, sometimes they just really, they don't know. So we want to give them as much information early on as possible. And that was something else that was great.
I think it's good for the parents to understand what the commitment is and what they expect from.
Right.
Everybody's on board.
Yeah. For next year, some of the things we're going to be trying out next year. With Naviance, we started really applying, well, sending our electronic packets. This year, next year, teachers are going to be sending their recommendation letters electronically. So no more of the old days where they have to put in an envelope or give it to us and send it in our coffee packet. They're just going to be typing their recommendations like they normally do, and they upload it to Naviance, and it gets sent to the school automatically. So it's definitely moving in the right direction. Naviance is a lot to it. We're getting there with Naviance. It's, like I said, there's so much to it that it takes a little while to get all the specifics[1598.57] takes a little while to get all the specifics kind of worked out, but we're really moving in the right direction. I'm really happy with, with our progress. And I think it's going to be a lot easier for the teachers next year. Moving on to Power School, some new things with that. There's talk of trying to do this next year. We'll have to see how the kinks go. But I think one of the things we're really going to be looking at doing is having students do their own course requests. So teachers still do their recommendations, and then they'll themselves click on the buttons and do the course requests. So then when they come down and meet with their counselor, we can sit down and say, okay, you, you have the right things, or hey, you still need more credits. And the great thing about Power School is it's going to tell them how many credits they still need for that specific year, how many they need for the graduation progress. So, okay, hey, you're a senior. You've only taken, you know, three years of, of math. You know, you really should take that fourth year. You can, you can not take math senior year, but you really should take the fourth year. And they'll kind of indicate that on, on Power School. So it'll be definitely helpful for students and parents. We're really excited about that. Also, another great thing is the teacher apprentice, apprentice at the Igoe School. What's going to be happening next year is we have a handful of students right now who are going to be going down to the Igoe School and working with elementary school children a couple of times a week. So it's going to be based on a semester. They'll get two to four students, and they'll work with them, basically being like a one-on-one mentor. The classroom teacher will still be there in, in the class. He'll still be with them. It's just kind of a little one-on-one attention for some of the younger students. So it's great for the young students to have an, an older high school role model. But at the same time, it's great for the high school students who can get that, that life experience of, you know, working with kids, because a lot of them are interested in the education field and working with children. So it's, it's great for everyone. And then this is kind of what we were talking about a little earlier. We, we talked about a lot of students going to the workforce and a little bit of a higher number there. What we're doing in guidance, along with Ellen Philsbury, is we're trying to expand what student opportunities are as far as careers and jobs. So we're looking at doing a whole series of field trips, about once a month, for the students who are just not interested in college. Some are borderline interested in college. They can go here. And some are not interested. And it's no matter what we say, no matter what their parents say, no matter what their friends say, they're not interested. So we want people to be successful after high school. It's not just be successful in the walls of Foxborough High. We want them to be successful forever. So we want to kind of give them a little opportunity to see what's out there, see if anything kind of piques their interest, and then kind of move forward that way. So we're very excited about the field trip opportunities. Developmental Guidance, our group guidance program, really not too many changes, basically the same thing. I teach freshmen. Mark Cedarchuck teaches sophomores. Erin Healy DeFello teaches the juniors. And Lorraine White teaches the seniors. Joe O'Neil, our college counselor, goes in with the juniors and seniors from time to time and works his magic in there as well. So let's skip ahead a little bit to the college info tab. Some of the things I want to highlight here after the first page of the profile. We have an unofficial transcript. We never had the unofficial transcript before. So we decided, you know, it's time to actually have one that we can give to students and not really be worried about it. So printed right across it, it says unofficial. Pretty, pretty basic. Otherwise, the, the old days, it's an official transcript, and who knows what, what can happen with that. So we want to make sure that it's, it's very safe to have it floating out there. And really, what we're looking at is what's involved in the packets that we send out. It's a school profile, transcript, secondary school report, and counselor wires. That's what we send for every student who applies to a college. They come down, let us know where they're applying. We package it all together and send it along. So the end of the year report on next page is very similar to what we were already talking about. And the page after with the matriculations is very similar as well, with the breakdown of 2010, 11, 12, where everyone's going as far as four-year colleges, two-year colleges, military work. One thing about the matriculations is we're really about in that 90% range. Sometimes it's 91, sometimes it's 89, but we're about 90. We did have that peak year at 93. But I'd say it looks like the past five or so years, we've been about 90. The previous five, it was more mid-80s. So I'm not going to say I'm necessarily crank about it being 90. I'd like to be, have it be higher. But I'm, I'm happy that it's at least around that 90-ish range. And we can, we can definitely improve and get back to that low 90 to mid-90 mark at the very least. So it's, I think with our new programs coming, we should hopefully hit the low 90s in the near future. So this next 10 pages, it's really every school that someone applied to this past year. It says where they were, how many were applied, how many applied, how many were accepted, denied, so forth. It's pretty long. You have to go through each page. But if you flip to the last page, one thing I do want to highlight, page 10 of 10, we had a total of 1,962 college application packets that were sent out by the guidance office this year. And we did so with zero errors. So it was a perfect score.
Wow.
Especially with, with the electronic and our copy, we're doubling our efforts just to make sure, since we were a little nervous about Naviance, since we were really going through it for the first time, we wanted to make sure everything got there, everything got there on time, everything got there where we're supposed to go. So we're, we're very, very pleased about that. Real quick on the, on the next page, it just really does the breakdown of where everyone has, is going for college for, for this graduating class. You can see the vast majority stay in Massachusetts. And then if you take Massachusetts and combine with the other New England states, it's definitely the real vast majority. There's, we only have one here and there upside of New England. So they definitely stay very close.
Do we ever do any follow-up on these kids like four years from now and see, you know, did they graduate, where did they graduate from?
No.
Do we ever do something like that?
We haven't in the past, early on. And the return was very, very minimal. So if we sent out 180, we were lucky if we get five to 10 responses. But, but I think it's something to be, that we could potentially use. Not just on a Facebook, but something, something of that, you know.
It just would be interesting to see, you know, who, who changed direction? Where did they wind up? What did they, you know, did they accomplish what they-
The challenge is keeping like a viable contact address. Because, you know, they don't do anything by snail mail at that age. So to keep an email address that's still valid for, we have to do a collection of contacts.
It's about the colleges don't contact us and tell us when somebody either leaves or when they graduate.
Well, they do.
You do see it in the newspaper.
Many do.
But they don't, they don't contact the guidance department. They don't tell them. You know, they'll report it in the newspaper.
I think what they would use it for is their own purpose. So if they knew that 10 kids from Foxborough went to Boston College, and nine of them dropped out in a year, they would use that information to say, you know, maybe, maybe we're not going to take as many from, from Foxborough if that was the case.
It would be good for us to know that, too.
Absolutely.
Because that would, you know, you got to step up to the plate here. This is where you want to go. Look what happened to the, the last group that went through there, you know. And, and it'll, it might be a little bit harder for us. You don't want them to take it personal that they didn't get in. But, you know, if we don't have a good track record with them, then we don't have a good track record.
Sure.
So, you know, why would they look favorable on their students? But, I mean, kids leave for different reasons, too. And the biggest is economic. But I, I think it, it just would be interesting to have some way of tracking these kids. You know, so we know how well we did.
Yeah, we'd like to do that.
And actually, Martha, I tell you what, I'm going to make the next principal do that.
Well, you better get the Patriots like Summerini.
Get an unfazed door.
Send him where he graduated from, enter to win a gift.
I love it.
Anything else?
And that's pretty much it. Scatograms, we, we've talked about that in the past. It's just really what it's easy to kind of get into each school. So it's really helpful for the students to see sometimes all the numbers. And just people telling them doesn't really say anything when they actually see it, whether they're freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior. It makes it a little bit more real.
I love the format, as always. It's great. I think it's a lot of work.
It really is.
It really is. But we really appreciate it. And I think it's-
I keep this handy in my office.
Yeah.
Because there's so much in it.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get a call. It's all in there. It's a great reference thing.
Did reach out, because I-
Yeah, it's a credit to the guidance department. They've done a wonderful job in the last few years, putting it all together. And I think we, we've truly come to a point, we have a real solid developmental guidance program. Can we tweak it? Absolutely. But I think we, we have a lot of good features that, you know, proud to say that they did great.
It's a strong foundation.
Mm-hmm.
For the program and that has gotten-
It can only get better.
Yeah. I think I just credit to the school committee because, you know, we've, we're back to a strong guidance program. And I know how hard people worked on that for so many years. So I appreciate it.
I also want to thank Jeff, though, because he's been someone that has received and heard from this committee and pushed for it as well. So I want to thank Jeff for all of his dedication and hard work. And I know, we're not going to get into all this right week. We will.
Kudos back. I say the same thing all the time. You know, it's a collective team effort. And, and I remember my first year, the push that guidance made to work to get it back. So it's, it's a mutual relationship. And all good has come of it, certainly. So, thank you.
You've done an awful lot for Foxborough High School in the years you've been here. And, you know, if I were going to be seeing you soon, maybe I would wax my mouth. But actually, we had a conversation just before the meeting tonight. The NEAS report is not in yet. So I, we had a sidebar, and I said, if it comes in, would, would you come back in the summer or in August? So he said he would. So I'm going to hold him to it in public.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
So we'll, we'll interview you to ring to lunch with the Patriots. Maybe we'll get lunch.
I don't think so.
That would be wonderful if you would, Jeff.
Sure.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Jeff, thank you very, very much for all the service you gave to us. And thank you for offering to stay as our interim to complete. Shows what a fine person you are. You wanted to complete the task of NEAS before you left us. And we appreciate the extra months you have given us.
Well, thanks.
Absolutely.
That's not just me. There's a lot, like I said, a lot of good people at the high school that do a lot of wonderful things behind the scenes to make it a great place. And I've been fortunate to work with them. You know, I said that I've been very fortunate. Most people work with a great group of people once in their lifetime. I've had that opportunity to work with great people twice. And, you know, couldn't ask for anything better. So fitting end. And again, Andy will carry it on and do a great job.
And I've enjoyed sitting you, with you at Pops. So you and your wife, come back and join me again, please.
Very nice.
Do our best. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Strategic Plan 2011, Ms. Finlay.
Yes. When I was preparing this, this part of the packet for the school committee's consideration tonight, it became more, more of a, of a challenge than we may initially have thought about a year ago. Because I think our, our collective idea was to have an update on, on the strategic plan at the end of its first year, which is now. And at the same time, create a district report card based on that plan. And when we went to do this, and we're talking about it over the last couple of weeks, when we went to do that, we realized that the timing of the district report card, which is a nice summary of, of everything that's, you know, what the district is in the picture, it really isn't possible unless you want it to include everything but academic achievement, because the MCAS results aren't in. So the, you know, once, I think, in future years, when we get a faster turnaround, when there, when there are national exams called the PARC assessments that are coming in a few years, we expected a quicker turnaround. We might have that data by the end of the year. But when we were collecting this for the strategic plan, this was, these were my thoughts, as you are sure have already read, that to update you on the progress on the plan itself, we just had an update a few months ago, the mini-year update. And so being that this is a multi-year plan, at the end of year one, most everything under Objective One, which is to continue to offer curriculum that's rigorous and dynamic and promotes high levels of achievement for all students, that all of those three-year goals and the strategies to support them are still in progress. So I, I, I know that the committee didn't write a three-year strategic plan expecting us to accomplish it all at the end of year one. That would not have been a good plan. So those are all still in progress. For Objective Two, which is to, to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. We did complete the first-year goal, as we mentioned to you a few months ago, where we established a system for collecting perception data about school culture and climate. Those were the culture and climate surveys that went out to staff, parents, and students in grades, students only for six through 12. And we have all of that baseline data that we have collected. And our next goal is to look at that data to establish three-year goals related to school culture. So that's the one change you see August 2012 in gray, because our administrative team has discussed it. And as of the last administrative meeting, which was only two weeks ago, we also have new information coming, as I put on the cover memo, from the MassTALS survey. MassTALS is the Massachusetts Teaching, Learning, and Leading Survey, that teachers are invited to participate. And the state encourages 50% or more participation by teachers in each district. So we're, we're trying to get to that 50% mark. And we did. If we get to the 50% mark, you get the results back specific to your district or your school. So I think four out of our five schools got to the 50% mark. So we will actually get the data back from that. So we just got the data back from that in the last two weeks. So the administrative team, in discussing that, we got the district data and then the four to five schools. What we would prefer to do is to look at both of those data sources, the Culture and Climate Survey and the MassTALS, which has some parallels to it, a lot of parallels and some different questions on each. And to really get into that, rather than come up with some goals based on one, and then we look at the MassTALS and say, well, it's maybe a little bit contradictory. Maybe we need to dig in a little bit. But we'd like to look at both of those data sources to come up with our three-year goals related to culture and climate. And we think that a good time to do that is at our administrative retreat in August. And certainly, if you would like to look at some of the early data at our school committee retreat, we can do so. And you can identify some areas that you'd like to see us set goals around. And that would inform us better for our August meeting. So that's our recommendation from our whole team, that we wait to be able to consider all of the data that we have from both sources. But it's certainly up to you, the school committee, about what the time, the timing is of the development of those goals and, and the report card itself. So you can see the strategies under Objective Two that we've achieved. We've completed the first two strategies. We have not yet started some of the strategies. So for example, piloting various surveys at different levels, this is through our K-12 Insight account, to gather print information, enhanced two-way communication. We want to do that, but we're not sure what we're surveying about until we have our three-year goals.
Right.
So we don't want to just try surveys. We, we have a tendency in education to like surveys. And so we have a tendency to want to over-survey. And actually, our students and our teachers completed more surveys this year than they probably ever had. Students especially had, actually had three. One about the culture and climate. They had the one about bullying, anti-bullying survey that we have done in the second year. We don't have the results back from that yet either. And then the third one was about, it's our Communities That Care Youth Survey, which is about perceptions and actual use of drugs and alcohol and other controlled substances. So we, they actually, our middle and high school students took three surveys over the course of, I'll just say, late winter to spring. So it isn't that we aren't getting information. We have a lot of information. It's getting it back and making it real and valuable. So we haven't piloted any additional surveys, because we're not sure what we want to survey about yet. And we do plan on integrating current issues into future surveys. Happy to report, we haven't had any new or controversial issues this year. But if we, if we do, we would certainly incorporate that. So those are not yet. But we have two more years at least for this plan. Objective Three, just for people watching on this, to prepare students with skills for the 21st century. And those are communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And usually creativity is, as it applies to problem-solving situations, by maximizing the use of educational technology. So our three-year goals, our first two are in progress, where we are expanding access to innovative technology tools that enrich instruction across all disciplines and create dynamic learning environments. And we have begun to implement the new Technology Skills Curriculum, K through eight. And we will really up the ante with that in September, because this is the first year that we've started with that, was this past year. We have not yet integrated those 21st century skills into all the curriculum documents, because we're just starting that. So as they come up for review and revision, we will be incorporating that into them. So that's definitely a long-term goal. And you can see the strategies underneath that. Have they been completed, or they're in progress, or they're ongoing? The only thing that is not yet is we have two things that we haven't yet started on. And one is that curriculum revision. And the other one is cost and develop a rollout plan for the technology. So what we want to do, what we have planned to do, is we're going to roll that into our district technology plan. So we have a technology plan that has needed a little bit of work. We've started working on that as a central office team. And we will continue to work on that with the administrative team. And actually have a report here sometime in the next school year about what is our technology plan, and how can we explain where we're trying to go, and how we plan to get there. So that is part of that. So rather than doing something in isolation, which I think is what we tend to do, we try to roll a plan for this. We try to, it's all incorporated into our district technology plan, which we've been working on the last couple of months with Paul Bortolati. So. And very quickly, sum up, Objective Four is to maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. And our three-year goals, which are to be fiscally responsible, to foster partnerships with local businesses and community agencies, and to maintain strong citizen taxpayer support for education. Of course, those three are ongoing and will probably always be. I have to say that I want to give many thanks to the town, which we've done since the town meeting. We have, we continue to have strong public education support here in the town. Very grateful for that. The fourth goal, to develop strategy for promoting the Foxborough High Schools, is part of that district report card that I'm sure we'll be talking about in a few minutes. And the strategies to support those four goals are either ongoing, in progress. The only thing that hasn't happened yet is the district report card, which will be our way, our way of increasing public awareness about student achievement data and our district successes and, and plans. So really, the, the feedback I would appreciate from the committee is the timing of developing this culture and climate goals between our school committee retreat and the administrative retreat in the summer, and the creation of the district report card, and the, the timing of that, and how you see that.
Well, you're recommending that we allow you to have the time to gather this survey. So is this something that-
Yes.
Like a consensus maybe from the group?
Right.
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
And I'm certainly-
It is part of the strategic plan-
Right.
-you voted in. So I, that would, I think officially, for me to know what direction you want me to go in is very helpful.
Okay.
And Debbie, I've spoken with you, and certainly I'm supportive of your plan and your timeframe. And I think it makes sense to work on the report card over the summer and potentially review it, even in line at the same time we review your evaluation. We guess, I think they would go hand in hand. So to me, that makes perfect sense. Just one question, if I can, while I'm speaking. Some of these things that we marked in progress, would it be your plan to give us a little more detail as, as to how we're progressing? You know, an example would be the goal under Objective Three, preparing students for 21st Century, where you talked about expanding access to innovative technology tools. And we say that's, we're doing that. It's in progress.
Yes.
I don't want to create a lot of work for you and Amy and the staff, but I think it'd be helpful for us to know a little more specifics. You know, how have we, where have we?
That would be great.
How much? Can you quantify? I think that's a fair question to the public. I'd like to know.
Absolutely.
And not all of these, I think, as you were going through, I was thinking, not all of these we probably need a progress report on, but some, I think, merit just a little more detail.
I agree. Which, which ones would be most helpful? Certainly that one.
Well, certainly in the first section, where we talk about academic scores.
Right.
It'd be interesting to know what they stand at.
Right. Now, this was obviously written last year. So here we are, we're waiting for the spring's 2012 MCAS data, which is the whole idea of the district report card. While it sounded great, let's do it at the end of the year. It seems like a great idea, but if the end of the year comes, and half of what we would want to put in the report card is not yet available to us. So that, that would be great.
I think it'll get easier with the reporting out of progress, since there seems to be consensus. It makes sense, strategic plan, pulling all that together. We really want that district report card. But it now makes sense that we're getting close to it to say, you know what, it won't be at the end of the school year. It's probably something that really will be at the beginning of the school year. And what a great way to kick off the school committee goals, which become the district goals. goals, and you talk about the achievement from last year. So, the district report card going out sometime, you know, and I'm not saying it has to be the beginning of school this, because it's, this is the first time, so it will take a little longer. But whatever you deem to be the right routine, that certainly makes sense.
Okay. I did see, thank you, I appreciate that. I did see one of the things specifically, we've talked actively and continue to, about extracurricular activities, participation rates, especially middle and high school. That would be something we could come back with that's more specific, because that is something we've talked about a lot at this table. I'm going to keep looking through and see what else.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to identify them all right now.
No, but I...
But I think as you go through, you guys can probably figure out where you have information that'd be, the next level of detail would be helpful for us.
Great.
And I would certainly feel comfortable with your judgment on that.
Okay. Happy to do that. All right. Is that all?
Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, now, superintendent's entry plan.
So, related, which is why they're following each other on the...
A cousin.
On the agenda.
First cousin.
So, as you remember, part of my new superintendent's induction program was to have an entry plan, and about at the mid-year mark, you got a very long, detailed report called the Superintendent's Entry Plan Findings, which detailed, I guess I call it the state of the state. Where is the district now? What are the things we're working on? What are the things we don't have in place? Where are we trying to go? What did parents say? What did the community say? What did staff say? Kind of blend it all together. So, I remember our discussion at that evening was very helpful to me, because we've kind of all understood where we are and where our attention needs to focus. So, the next step after that entry plan findings, because those were the findings. So, it is, it was my job as a new superintendent with the Department of Ed and the Superintendent's Association Joint Program, is to develop strategy as a result of those findings. So, in our conversations in my cohort, there's always a little bit of a rub if the district already has a strategic plan, if they don't have a strategic plan, if they have one that's out-of-date, current. So, some people were like me, where there was one that was just newly adopted within, you know, less than a year, and that would be us. There are other people who had one that was very old and was out of date, could be ignored. There are other people who are in the middle of it, or almost at the end of it, which is even more awkward, to be honest with you. And there's some people that didn't have one at all. So, what our charge was is to keep the strategic plan sitting next to it, but not necessarily to develop my superintendent's strategy strictly around a strategic plan developed when I was at the superintendent. So, the goal is to try to have them belong to each other or relate to each other without being an identical thing. So, the whole idea is to take all of those complex findings and distill them into a few key priorities, and they literally say two to four priorities. So, the phrase that's often used is, we're trying to get from grade to grade, or most people talk about district improvement, more generalized. So, the question is, where do we really think that if we really place emphasis on very specific initiatives of focus areas, what is it that will really make the difference in our district? So, very much parallel to the strategic plan, we decided as an administrative team on three areas. And you can see that our three strategic areas of focus are leadership growth and development, advanced learning, and 21st century skills. So, because I know people are watching and don't have it, if you don't mind, I think I would like to read specifically what they said. So, again, not to use language, but it's really where are you going to place your bets? What are you going to really focus your energy on and say, "I bet that if we really do this with more energy, with more focus, with more rigor, that it will make a difference." So, these are the three things that we have identified. Under leadership growth and development, provide opportunities for shared leadership, growth and development of faculty and administrators through professional learning communities, collaborative inquiry, data coaching, looking at student work, administrative professional development, and other structures for professional collaboration to impact student achievement across all grade levels and content areas. And as you know, this directly links to that first objective in the strategic plan about improving academic achievement. So, what this really says is, if we do all of these things now, or we've begun the work in all of those things previously mentioned, but we can't say we do them all to the nth degree, or with 100% fidelity, or 100% of effort. So, if we enhance those structures for teachers and administrators to collaborate around data coaching, around looking at student work, and how can we improve our teaching and learning services, that will have an impact on student achievement. So, it does directly link to the strategic plan and the specific goals that are related to MCAS and other assessments, but it's really the meat and potatoes of what do we plan to do about it. The second strategic objective we identified under advanced learning is to create more opportunities for advanced learning through differentiated instruction, enrichment and challenge, tiered curriculum, and extracurricular clubs and activities that inspire students to find their niche, pursue their passions, and meet their interests. This also links to that same objective one in the strategic plan, because if you can inspire kids to try more things, to follow their passions, to pique their interest, that's the idea, is that that would link to better student achievement. So, we've talked a lot here about enrichment and challenge and opportunities for advanced learning. And when I did the entry plan findings, it kind of came through loud and clear that while there are more things that we can do for students who are struggling, or who need intervention, or remediation, we have a lot of those programs in place, and while there are, everything else in the findings are not something we're letting go. We are trying to do it all, so nothing gets dropped, but where we're putting the most effort is here. So, I think as a community, we felt that we do a fairly good job with kids who need remediation or intervention, or who need to, you know, improve to the grade level standards. And there are still a few things we want to do better, but where we really need to put our efforts is, what about the students who are capable of advanced learning? So, you can see the strategic initiatives underneath that, that we plan to work a little bit harder on to provide those opportunities. 21st century skills is the third area, to meet the needs of 21st century learners by clearly defining 21st century skills. So, those four Cs, we use it a lot, communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking. But we don't know if we've really defined it for faculty, for students even, who are older and start to own their own learning. We have to make sure we clearly define those things. We need to embed those skills into regular classroom instruction, expanding collaboration among students and staff, providing technology-based professional development, and communicating the district's technology plan to the public. We've talked a lot about that, especially since Bill arrived, and that's something we don't feel we've done very well. So, that is linked to all of that. And you can see some of the initiatives that we plan to work on to achieve that objective. So, those three things together are the three pieces that speak to our theory of action. So, our theory of action is that if we provide opportunities and supports for professional collaboration and shared leadership, create enhanced opportunities for advanced learning, and utilize technology effectively. I was supposed to change that. Sorry. I just realized as I'm thinking, I didn't read my own notes. It's supposed to say, "And embed 21st century skills effectively." It's not just about using technology. So, let me correct myself. "And embed 21st century skills effectively." Then we will ensure that students have a well-rounded educational experience that prepares them for college, career, and global citizenship. I believe I didn't change that.
It's embed and utilize.
Embed, it's no utilize. It's embed 21st century skills effectively.
I don't know how this is framed.
One page.
There's a lot in this one page. I mean, it's like a map. It's the roadmap to, you know, kind of identify what it is that we aspire to, and I really, I really like it. I think it's great.
I think it's hard to look at two things, and we've tried so hard over the last few years to not have so many things, but this really is a more detailed support for the strategic plan, I guess I would say.
Say that again.
This is a more detailed plan of support for the overall strategic plan, which tends to be a little bit more global.
Well, I was just going to ask you, so should we embed this into our strategic plan? Or would you say these are the action items or focus areas that support our strategic plan? Because at the beginning, as you were going through this, it is confusing.
Yes.
And I don't want to give...
It is.
I don't want to give our...
No, but it's sort of the cart before the horse. So, if ideally, in an ideal world, the entry plan findings would have occurred, this development of strategy would have occurred, and then a strategic planning team could use it to build a strategic plan around it. That's ideally. Very few districts are following the ideal timeline. So, the tricky thing is how to embed this with something that was just voted on a year ago, before we really collected all the detailed findings. I mean, we collected as much as we could, but not through the format that was required of me as a new superintendent. So, it's two very helpful processes that somehow have to come together. So, you can either look at this as embedded behind it, which I think is fine if you vote it to attach to the strategic plan. I think that's fine. Or we could wait, and as we go forward, you can have a go-around where you physically embed this into it in the future. I don't think it matters, because we're going to keep looking at both.
I think it's reasonable to attach it now, so it's there, and it's...
For anybody that comes in will know that we talked about it, and it's part of it, and it reinforces it.
It is. In fact, the vision, we kept exactly from the strategic plan, so there's a match.
I agree. I'd be happy to make a motion.
Well, it may be as simple as just when we get together at our retreat, just amending our, or editing our strategic plan to reference these areas, so that we see where they tie in.
But we don't want to mess with the cycle. The strategic plan has a cycle to do that.
Right.
So, I don't think we should do that before the cycle in the strategic plan. So, we might be getting ahead of ourselves, and so there are tracks. I think Martha's absolutely correct. Let's attach it, because that's what you said, bringing those two processes together.
And she's trying to incorporate it with it, and hers...
They're similar, but they are separate, so we should attach it.
Right. And it's fine to just attach it, because the first two go right under the first objective, and the third column is right under the third objective.
Yeah. I mean, the other, you know, other vantage point of looking at it is to say that the strategic plan is a living, breathing document and can be amended, if we so choose, if we want to amend this into it. I mean, I think it's maybe worthwhile to have a bigger discussion, or not a bigger, but more of a discussion about it.
I don't think we want to amend this. You just want to attach it, saying that this is her entry plan, this is what, you know...
I'm not saying amend this, Martha.
No.
I'm saying amending or changing the, I'm not saying changing, but again, the strategic plan, we could include this, which would mean amending it, if we so choose.
Amending it by attachment.
Whether we attach it or amend our strategic plan to include this is probably not as important as making sure there's clarity of direction.
Well, you don't want this to wind up in a draw.
No.
And not have any direct correlation with the strategic plan, because it does have some valid initiatives and comments, and I think as an attachment, I don't have a problem with it.
I think that's probably a good way to go.
Yeah. Just as an attachment.
I do like all three of the areas. I think they're great. I wondered if, under leadership growth and development, if it, at first when I read that, I was thinking that was relating to students, but it's relating to staff.
And administrators, yes.
And administrators. Would it make sense, or would it dilute it, to think about, you know, building a component for students as well?
Well, I think what this is saying is, we have a lot of programs in place. We have to ensure that we get stronger as a faculty and as administrative team in terms of doing the job better. I can't say, "Wow, it's already done well."
And I like that emphasis.
Yeah, so this is really about what we bring to the table, and we've started all of these things, collaborative inquiry, data coaching. As you know, we took the course last summer. Several of us took, many of us took the course last summer. So, we're doing all of these things. What we're saying is, if we work on our own professional development as administrators and working with faculty, all in the same mode, that it will impact student achievement. So, it's how we do our jobs better to affect more quality teaching and learning.
Well, they'll reflect what we're doing.
Right.
Plain and simple.
This would be a great framework for the report card going forward.
It's all going to eventually come together nicely.
I don't think that this next version, or this first version of the report card, you probably couldn't comment too deeply on these, but we ought to track how we do in these three areas.
Agreed.
Going forward.
So, if you like the three objectives, then I think that would be part of the report card. These are three things we're trying to do better.
Yep, very good.
I guess you have to...
So, I make a motion to attach it.
Our motion was made. Would you like to second mine?
Good job.
All in favor?
So long ago, I forget.
All in favor? Okay. So, attach.
So, you can see, a lot of work has gone on, but I think the more transparent we are about our work, the more effective we'll be.
Of course.
So, we want everybody to know what it is we're working harder at.
Excellent.
Debbie, do you feel sometimes like we're working on so many things, we're spinning our wheels sometimes?
Well, that's the whole idea of the only picking two to four objectives.
You just can't have so many that you're never going to reach them.
Right. It's not that we're going to drop anything. I don't want people to think we're going to drop anything. It's just...
I think as you approach, then you can go on to something else and bring it in.
Focus on a few meaty items and try to do them well. So, we had several go-arounds at the superintendent's table where people sort of suggested some of their perhaps objectives, and there was a lot of discussion about, don't make them weak, make them meaty, make them meaningful. And I really think, working with our team, that we did, this was our first, this was our first three at the ghetto. We didn't change any of them. We just said, "Yep, those are meaty, those will be effective, and we're going to boldly go there."
Any further questions on that?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Uppen?
Yes.
FY13 bid requests, please.
Okay. As you know, we go out to bid. Primary reason for that is the scope of work being done is not on a job-by-job basis, it's on an accumulative basis for the year. In many of these areas, we can easily exceed the $25,000 state threshold. So, by going out to bid, we have the right to use a contractor kind of at will and not worry about whether or not we would go over the $25,000. We put out a number of bids on an annual basis, some we don't get people soliciting back to, which obviously also leaves us out to be able to go to anybody locally if we need to, to fill those. Our electrical service bids went out and came back in this year. Anderson Electric Contractors was the low bid. The gas and oil burner service, commercial boiler systems came in as the low bid. Elevator maintenance, associated elevators came in as the low bid. Fire alarm maintenance and service, Richardson Brothers, or Richard Brothers, I mean, and emergency generator service, power equipment company is the low bid, and HVAC is commercial boiler systems. And a couple of these, we haven't been able to get bids in the past. We did actually get bids this year, so happy to say at least that.
Why is that?
I think people are starting to realize that the public sector is a viable area to do business in, and they are starting to understand how these bid processes work better and better as time goes on, because, you know, more construction that they're involved with, they realize the side piece of that is also the maintenance of these facilities. So, unfortunately, the one area we didn't get for a number of years, we haven't gotten one, is on plumbing service side, which always surprises me, because I really think that one of the contractors locally would, you know, see this as a good opportunity to make money. But it also speaks to the fact that many of them are very busy, so they don't need this type of work. So, again, we're left with that particular one being able to go off to a local supplier and call when we have something that we can't handle in-house. So, what I'd be looking for is your acceptance on the seven that are listed, and allow us to move forward with them. Obviously, we also share these with the town side.
On the athletic trainer?
Yes, that's a separate one.
That's a separate?
I know, it's a separate one. Are any of those services reimbursable insurance-wise, or is it just somebody's coming in as a trainer? I don't.
This is really why we're using them as a trainer for the different sports events.
So this person is here when we have.
Yes.
Okay.
On-site.
On-site, okay.
We used to use, years ago, from what I could tell, was done with the EMTs in town.
Yep.
But to be honest with you, we can get more qualified relative to the types of work we're doing. Obviously, an EMT is very qualified, but for what we're doing.
So I mean, does somebody is onsite when we have an athletic event?
Absolutely.
Which would be required on certain.
I just wanted to make sure that that's what this was.
Would you like a motion to accept the utility service bids?
Yes.
We can do that as one slate, correct?
Yes.
I need the motion.
Outside.
And I just have one question and discussion. Well, one of the winning bidders or proposed winning bidders, Richard Brothers, was a second on one of the other services, the electrical services.
Correct.
Is there any?
No, that's, yes, I'm sorry.
So Richard Brothers also bid on the electrical service, but were higher. I just noticed the coincidence that they're on two of them. Is there any value to trying to see if they didn't want to aggregate services or do we presume they did that when they responded at these prices?
We assume that they gave us the best price that they could do in each area and, you know, quite honestly, I think the unfortunate way they bid laws were, unless we bid them as a combined service, which is not very practical in some of these cases because some people can't do both.
Right.
So we wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, vote. All in favor for accepting the slate, 5-0-0.
And I would be happy to make the motion to accept the bid for the athletic trainer.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Vote. 5-0-0 and thank you.
As long as we're doing the bid side of it, it would fall under probably other as well, but to, you know, kind of put it all together. Stage lighting bids, as you all know, you ask me to go out and basically get design specs for the auditorium. We did phase one already, which you've approved, which was the house lighting. That work is due to start actually within the next week or so. Phase two and three was really the controls for the stage lighting, number one, and number two to that was the actual stage lighting, all the apparatus, the gear, the lights. We hired, as you know, KVA to actually do a full design spec. They brought in specialists. They actually worked with the high school staff to look at the ways that they would use the equipment. We didn't put in, you know, every bell and whistle you can do, but we did make sure we put in a system that we can add to.
Excellent.
To fall into this. And so we got their bids in and we were originally estimating that we'd be close to $250,000 and we thought we'd be lucky if we got to that. We had five bidders come in. Ostro Electric actually came in with the low bid. They've been already qualified and their references have been checked and they came in at $192,000. So our recommendation is that the school committee accept that bid and allow us to move forward with it, is on our list that we proposed to the town of the few additional items we would do under the state funding, town funding.
I'll make a motion.
Accept.
And just a discussion if I can.
Certainly.
So it's a lot of money, obviously, to do this electrical work. But you've done the research, Bill, to feel comfortable. I mean, you knew, you mentioned just now that you were expecting somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars.
Well, actually, we had an electrical engineering firm, GGD, came in and did their first design specs on it. And in doing theirs, they, they're obviously looking at all the types of equipment that could be done. I think you also remember that the, one of the issues we have here is the control panels that operate what we currently have, very old mechanical systems. They're not the electronic type of controls that you currently have. And there is a concern with that. We also have some of the lighting fixtures themselves and all the wiring to that are asbestos laden, so we really wanted to try to eliminate that issue going forward. Again, there's never going to be a good time, there's never going to be a good amount, but what we had all said to the town is that we would try to do this project in whole and when we were done, be done. So I would, you know, strongly recommend that we use it as part of the town's funding of the high school project and again, not look to come back to them down in the future and say, we now need to do this.
Well, I know we've all spoken in support of it. I just wanted, for the public knowing it's a sizable amount, to understand that you've certainly done the due diligence, that it's a, you know, a reasonable amount of money to spend for this kind of a project.
Yes.
And having briefed us, I mean, you've briefed us since the fall when we had the walkthrough for the advisory committee and the selectmen and I think it's wonderful we got to do the auditorium lights, but the stage lighting is where we had some real safety issues and they really, that's, that's critical, absolutely.
What do they have to do to get the asbestos, we have to green that place off or how are they going to do that?
Just like we did the whole building, they have tent off areas as we work there. So they can actually get pretty good at making the area smaller. I think the, Bruce, to your point though, easily on stage lighting, to any kind of theatrical lighting, the numbers can be through the roof. You can, you can really kind of lose your mind as far as the capabilities of what you can do on these systems. Again, even in dealing with Steve Massey and a number of the other peoples that would be the normal users of this facility on a daily basis, you know, we said to them, I mean, the point here is to design something that will be expandable, usable, and if we never did anything more, we'd all be happy that we had that much. But if we, you know, got additional resources down the road and maybe, maybe the drama program got bigger and had some needs that way, that we would at least have the platform. And that's the big thing here is we will have a platform we could build on or just effectively use properly, so.
I'm comfortable.
I can't wait to walk in here and not feel like I'm in a cave. Seriously.
When's the completion date?
All of the stuff is, we expect by back to school next year.
Excellent.
We're going to be 100%.
So this is summer?
Yep, summer, starting now.
Starting now. I know, the students have only one more day, correct? Two, two.
Do they get it Monday, Wednesday, the half day?
That's correct. Today's already gone.
A flashlight to ring. That's true.
So we need to.
We need, we had, we've had motions.
Yes.
And would we like to vote?
Yes.
Okay. 5-0.
0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is exciting. One of my favorite spots in the building. Okay. Proposed school committee dates for the next calendar year. Would you like to explain?
Yes, I would. First want to thank Wendy Wills, who puts this together for us every year and Ms. Lord and I had a chance to look at this. So it really mirrors, Wendy, jump right in if there's anything else you need to say, but it really mirrors the calendar that you've used in previous years. The only difference is, if you notice, the Monday after April vacation week, we tend to have school committee meetings the Monday after, let me just get to mine. The Monday after the vacation week, both in February and April. And I just noticed this year, sometimes that's challenging if people tend to take family vacations and then you have a packet to read and everybody's back to work on Monday morning and you have a meeting at night. So one of, the February one was really not possible to move because then you bump into March because February is kind of a short month. But in April, if you remember just a few months ago, it was, we had the meeting right after the April vacation week and then because of town meeting, it was really more than a month before we met again and that seemed like a long time. So instead of coming back the Monday right after April vacation week, we could put it a week later and have it on April 29th and then town meeting would follow and then our next meeting would be May 29th, three weeks later, so.
May 20th.
May 20th.
Oh, May 20th. Sorry.
Sounds good.
Sound good? So that's really the only difference. Other than that, I think we, Wendy, use standard operating procedure for the timing of your meetings unless you have other thoughts of something that didn't work or you'd like to see different.
So what, say, next week will be the 18th supposedly?
Yes, although of course, we always have five snow days built in, so I guess I'd like to take every opportunity, starting when it's hot out, to tell people, if you're a faculty member watching at home, those five days count as terms of the whole school calendar. People need to plan their lives with the addition of the five snow days because they're embedded into the school calendar and they are available for school. So we don't want people to be planning vacations starting on the 19th because you have to build in the five snow days. So as you can see here, the cancellation days or the snow days would go through the 25th of June and people need to preserve those days.
And if you have to announce a snow day, you're going to do it cheerily, right?
I'm going to do cheerily. They like me to be a little bit more.
Next year.
They like me a little more chipper when I call with school cancellation announcements and try to be a little happy sounding, they said, because they are.
Right, right. I would like to have a motion, yes.
School calendar is presented.
Second.
Okay. Vote. 5-0-0. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, other matters. Do you have any more, Mr. Ukevich? You slipped yours in.
Yep, we have one more, which is a few more donations under the Dianavie Memorial Fund, another $225 in total, so we're creeping up to almost the $6,000 mark. We're at $5,819.
Excellent.
Your acceptance of those three additional would be appreciated.
I would need a motion to accept.
Martha?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Vote to accept 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Other?
Yes. I always have another, don't I? Yeah. I am really happy to announce that the Foxborough Education Association, last Monday, ratified the new educator evaluation system.
It's very exciting.
All kudos to them. They did their, they held their own information sessions on two different days consecutively, Wednesday and Thursday, one at the elementary school and one at the high school, and did their whole information session for their membership and then came back the following Monday, which was a week ago, and the membership ratified. So very proud to be working here with teachers who really embrace something new, especially something new as large as that is. So it's a great place to be. Foxborough was a great place to be and we work with wonderful educators who are ready to take on probably the biggest challenge we've had and to do it together. So we are, at this point, I just really want to offer them all congratulations and kudos. They're fabulous to work with. And at this point, the only step, you, as you know, you voted for the meeting before two weeks ago, and we're just waiting from the Department of Ed on what the process is for reporting that out. Believe it or not, they don't have it. I believe we're in the first half dozen in the state to have a ratified agreement and they don't even have their reporting. So I said, what do I do now? Am I supposed to tell you where I am? And they said, we'll let you know. So that's great. Many, many thanks to them.
Keep the pressure on the state.
That's right.
They were thrilled to get up. Excellent, moving along. Other?
Kate?
I'd like to go with the end, if you don't mind.
I have, I had spoken to Debbie about us finishing up the high school project and probably putting together some sort of a plaque with the names of all the people that were associated with this huge endeavor and making sure that we include Paul Jackson and Larry Harrington and probably the name that should go on the top of the plaque is Michael Larry for his incredible job overseeing and making sure that everybody did what they were supposed to, when they were supposed to. I don't think this project would have gone as smoothly if it hadn't been for the fact that he was on everybody all the time. And I think we should take probably one more walkthrough before we give back one penny to anybody. And I think we should go and see the things that we wanted to make sure that we included and see if there's anything else that we need to pay attention to because walking through it the first time, and I know I'll take my hits from everybody in town on this, but this is our project and we were given the authority to make sure that we bring this school up to speed, so I think we should, you know, go probably, see if we can get the bidding committee to come through and, you know.
When?
I don't know, either ask the selectmen or the advisory committee if they want to join us so that they know what in the name of God we're talking about, what we still have to deal with. Because I do not want to come back here next year with a giant CIP item and saying, oh, by the way, we should have done this or we should have included it. I think that would be foolhardy on our part, so I really think we need to stay on top of this and make sure we've got everything that we need.
So we could put it this way, when does the town expect us to release the funds?
Not till we're done.
Not till we're done.
Not till we're done.
So when do you think?
When we're done.
I know, but when do you think we will have everything in and then the walkthrough would follow that as the final?
I'd love to almost see us do a video because we had the before and I'd love the town to see the difference in those, in the science wing especially. I mean, that is like a major, major transformation and I think the people in this town should see where we spent that money because that science wing is second to none right now.
Right, but the safety improved in the phys ed areas too and the gyms are, I think, very important also.
You know, I think you really accomplished what your goal was overall. I think there are some areas and we're hopefully going to tweak a bunch of them this summer. I don't know if you want to see them before we're finished or if you want to see them when we're finished.
No, when we're finished. And just to make sure if there's anything else.
We have target dates for everything to be done by August 15th.
Okay.
So to give our custodial staff time to make sure that it gets cleaned up as well before we start school, so.
Can we put together some sort of a video like we did before so that we could, I think it'd be worth it. People, I think people.
Video or slideshow.
I mean, maybe the still pictures are enough. We'll think, we certainly do one of the, whatever we think would be most effective.
Johnny Hatcher will be here, but Cooper Vashram, we probably want to hurry and get before he goes off to college. You could probably enlist the duel.
We got the before.
We have the before and that would be, that would be pretty cool to.
They help sell it to the town in the first place, so I think we owe it to the town to show them that we, we lived up to our end of it.
But it doesn't sound like we're really going to be anticipating any major things that.
I don't think any major thing.
I think your last round, you really collected.
That's what I thought.
And the details.
So would it be, would it be appropriate then to kind of consider, you know, after, maybe right before school starts or right after school starts?
Well, that's why you're saying August 15th, they should be done, so.
How about the Monday, we have a meeting the Monday night before we open for teachers, so that's the last Monday in April. Yeah, over a month. Not in.
That'd be a good opportunity. Everything really should be.
Should be done.
Okay.
The 27th.
Yep.
So do you want a video before that?
No.
Or not?
No.
Okay. Well, that would give you time to invite the selectmen.
Well, we have a walkthrough that night?
Yeah.
As part of the meeting and then.
Like we did before.
Maybe start. Say, let's shoot for that and if for some reason something is out, we can do the first meeting in September.
See how long our agenda is.
What, Joe?
See how long our agenda is.
There's only one meeting.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, so tentatively, we've got the, that first, August.
Yeah.
Thank you.
August 27th.
August 27th.
Do you have others?
No.
No, we don't. Kate?
I just want to say, well, this is my last meeting. It has been an honor to sit on the school committee. Martha, it has been a wondrous nine years. I thank the team here and I thank you for the leadership of the schools, Debbie Spinelli, Amy Beardo's, Bill and Wendy. You've been equally as valuable. You kept us all on target, so I'm looking forward to sitting in the audience, so I'm not going away. I will be here at every school committee meeting and I look forward to seeing you on July 23rd. Thank you.
Kate, just before, I'd call for the motion to go into executive session by roll call. Since we last met, we had a very successful class night for seniors with so much to happen. It went almost three hours. We had an extremely successful underclassmen night where several underclassmen, freshmen through juniors, were honored and there were, some people went away with as many as three awards.
Yes.
They have pushed themselves and excelled themselves so much, a successful graduation. and I was very excited to see that our new IGO principal, Mr. Stanton, took part in the Founder's Day, Mrs., right, on the IGO float, he was invited and was thrilled to be there, and Mrs. Pacra, on her own initiative, and nobody knew she was coming, came to Foxborough High School's graduation, which I thought was wonderful, and she made an effort, even though her school is presently doing knee ask, came up, had a knee ask visit that day, actually, came up and was at the eighth grade crossover day up here at high school, because that will be her first...
Step-up day.
That will be her first full graduating class.
Yes.
So, all those wonderful things, and we've all had a notice about mask, our meeting November, it's the Veterans Day meeting, I mean, weekend.
Okay.
If, if anybody signs up, it's a good savings, by July, I think 15th, by the middle of July, what we can do, I know several of us at least go for one day or more, I'd like to recommend that we reserve at least one seat for the full time, because some of us go on different days, it will, it is transferable.
Oh, great.
So, with that, I would like us, if, by consensus, if we reserve one full ticket at...
At the savings.
At the savings.
That's a good, yeah.
It is, I make sure it's transferable, and then, you know, the closer we get to it, others may want to go for two days.
Great.
So, by consensus, could, I'll talk to you, Wendy, about that then?
Okay, sure.
Great.
Debbie, one other thing, Wendy, there?
Yes.
Are you...
I just wanted to wish everybody a restful, fruitful, enjoyable summer.
I'd like to thank Kate for her many use of service on the school.
Yeah, but it will not, it will seem strange not to see you.
I'll be right over there, I'll be sitting next to Frank.
At the table.
Sitting next to Frank. Just, this is a comment, I kind of lost track that this was your last meeting, I think during the nine years that you've been on this committee, that I've, we've agreed to disagree, we've always had our come-together moments, and I just want you to know, it's been a pleasure to sit with you.
I have toes to that one.
Okay.
Thank you, good job. It has been an honor, Martha, you have been truly wonderful.
It's about the kids.
It is.
It is.
But I've been blessed, because I had good superintendents and I had good teachers, I had good, I had a good mentor on the school committee, and I had good chairs, and you were one of those, Martha, you were one of the best, along with Frank and Vin IGO, and I owe you a lot.
Well, we've come a long way.
That's why I owe you a lot.
Nobody owes me anything, but it's been a pleasure, Kate.
No loyalty, respect. Okay. I'm going to ask for a vote by roll call to go into executive session for the discussion of draft of the collective bargaining agreements for the Foxborough Custodial Workers Association, Foxborough Maintenance Workers Association, and the Foxborough Educational Secretaries Association, and to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, as an opening, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining position of the school committee. We will be returning to open session for an update of the collective bargaining agreements and a vote by the committee in public.
I'll make the motion, or whatever.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Bruce?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.